What time is it?
7:01.
All right, we'll open this meeting October 4th, planning board, and we're gonna start with a public hearing for a conditional use application for LinePro slash Apple Corps Route 109, Acton, Maine. And who would like to speak for the plan of... State your name and what's the plan?
I've met some of you guys before, Joe Stanley. I'm over at LinePro, in Acton, Maine. And what we're hoping to do is put some office space up on the second floor of Mr. Crowley's building over there. He'd be willing to help us out with that. You know, some existing area that he used, they always used for the Apple Corps, or things like that, and we'd like to renovate it into our office spaces. With my submission, I don't see any kicking around. I had submitted a floor plan originally with you guys, rather than what we wanted to do. We've since ironed that out with Fire Marshal's office on the layout. We do have to be extra copies of that.
Where's the street?
Well, I'll give you one more sketch here in a minute. This is the office as it relates. These are the windows that overlook Route 109.
Route 109?
Yeah.
Top of the page.
Yep. And then here's more of it. It's a top-down view of the site. The site overall. So that's basically the gist of what we'd like to do, is kind of renovate that second floor, add the required amount of parking spaces for our use. Beyond that, as I said, we've been working with the Fire Marshal's office to get their approval on what we're trying to do with all the details of the way.
The state?
Yep. We do have those copies of their permit approving that plan as well. Beyond that, we're hoping to see the street through the process.
How many people are gonna be working in there?
Currently, just myself and one other person. If business picks up, up to maybe two other people, I can never see the demand being much higher than that on this area. But that's comfortable size for us. We're not trying to get anything in there.
What do you think your office hours are gonna be?
Well, work hours, as far as, you know, when we may be there, anywhere from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You know, as far as the public, if they wanted to stop in or have meetings, it would probably be 8:00, 8:00 AM would probably be as early as we open the doors for that. But when things get busy in the spring and the fall, we usually try to get going at daybreak when we can.
Does anyone from the public have any questions for the applicant? No? Well, then we'll close the public hearing session of this meeting, and we'll go into our regular planning board meeting. Does anyone have any questions? About yes?
Can you talk a little bit about, kind of primarily, who your clients would be, you know, just in general nature?
Yeah, we do, you know, probably 50/50 residential boundary surveys and then, you know, small construction layout. For instance, recently, we've gotten a lot of requests around the lakes for people who are trying to expand their camps or their homes. And, you know, sometimes they hire us to determine where the boundary lines are. Sometimes they hire us to help them figure out, you know, details of their facilities for some expansion, or impervious surface calculations, lot coverage, those sorts of things. We haven't had as much of it recently. We do, we are involved with a paramount construction layout, too. People are laying out subdivisions or single lots. We help them place everything on the ground where it's supposed to go.
So you spend most of your time outside, playing the wheel?
I would say it's probably 50/50. You know, best-case scenario for us moving forward, you know, if we get in here, is we'll get one more guy. Two, the other two guys will be out in the field almost all of the time, taking measurements, looking for property corners. And then I'll be inside, doing calculations, drawing up the plans, estimates, phone calls, that kind of thing, looking at it. You know, it's usually about 50/50, you know, ground time versus office time for most of these types of projects.
And is there a lot of traffic that's coming in and out of the office, in terms of meeting with clients?
No, I would, maybe two people, one or two people a week, I would guess. Generally, we're, it looks like we're being involved with 40, 50 jobs a year, something of that nature, so we don't give into a lot of past through customers. We're gonna deal with people two, three, four weeks at a time, to start to finish, get their job done, and then move on to the next one.
The parking is gonna be right behind the building there, huh?
That's where we're proposing at. We're, you know, just because it's gonna be the closest area to our, to the stairway there.
And it's gonna be where the trailers are now?
Yeah, that's what our plan was, to get all that stuff out of there, clean it up a little bit, and then that would make room for additional parking.
And what driveway would they be coming in?
We would be, is it access lots in that area? We'd be coming in...
Over here?
Over here, yeah.
On the west side of the property?
Yeah, and that's where our sign is located at this point in time, so I think people are gonna gravitate towards that entrance anyways, if they're looking at us. This, the two signs, our sign is right there.
The sign, eh?
We did last year go through the process of DRT, get an entrance permit on that particular one.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Have you got a copy of that?
Yep.
All right, was that already submitted?
It's been submitted to the code enforcement office already.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Does that entrance have to be upgraded in any way, or is it fine the way it is?
It's very much usable the way that it is. I personally don't know the details on much gravel.
The permit didn't say anything had to be done to it?
No, no, they, we do have, that was last year, I'll have to look at their specifications, but Mr. Crowley had already constructed the majority of that entrance at that point in time, and then they came out, they came out to the site visiting and included it.
There was a recommendation made on that entrance to pave back the first 10 feet for a vehicle to come off the parking pavement and then drive out. I don't know if it was in the, I don't think it was in the act of the license procedure there, we agreed to do that?
Conditions, yeah, they don't list anything specific under the conditions on the approval. Just paving to the edge of the right away is what they stated.
And the right of way is where on that, on the road there, you know? How far back it goes?
Where his property line is then? I guess it's 66 out there, but...
Yeah, I believe it's a little bit wider, I believe it's 80.
It changes, it changes five times from 9:50 to 109 to Goosebumps Road, depending on where you are.
And that's from the center of the road, or...
They wanted it paved from the edge of the Route 109 to the end of the right of way.
Okay, okay.
So, right to where his property starts.
Right, yeah, and I was just figuring, when you said the right of way was like 66 feet, or 80 feet, or something, that's the whole size?
Yeah, divided in half, so it's not a lot.
Gotcha. So that's probably what they were talking about, when they were talking about having part of it paved, was up to the, you know, from the street to the right of way. Anyone else? Yes?
Is it Joe?
Joe?
Joe, you said the Fire Marshal's already given the approval?
Yep.
And I guess I'm only questioning, and if he's giving the approval, I guess it's not an issue, but the fact that you're upstairs from a restaurant, and what appears to me anyway, looking like there's only one way in or out, up there? That's not a issue to a Fire Marshal?
Part of what he's requiring is that we make sure this window is passable to come out on the other side if something happens. And that's, that note right there is all we need to, that was one of the reasons he's asked for since I submitted the last verdict to him, which is that issue.
When he goes over a roof, right?
Yes.
See, that's what I was thinking, too, yeah.
The Fire Marshal came in, we have to have two means of egress. The back door is one, and the window complex on the front is one, because it's got a complete porch right underneath it, right at its window height, so that they can get out and just step down under the window and walk to, almost to the ground level.
They require fire lamp system?
They are requiring us to match what we have downstairs. 24-hour day monitoring system, horns, buzzers, pull stations, the whole. We already have that in place downstairs. It is monitored upstairs with heat, smoke detectors. It needs to be brought up to date for occupancy of an office, pull stations, strobe lights, horns.
The locations of some of those features that he's talking about are depicted in this legend, the horns, strobe, smoke detectors, and where they're going to be.
So, and here's this no sprinkler system on the construction permit, does that mean that they're not recommending sprinkler system? Does that mean...
This is not a, if there was a new building, new structure, the conditions would be completely different than renovating an older structure. In the town of Acton, there is no sprinkler code that says we have to do it until it gets into a, the occupancy, I don't know what the number is, it's 200, 250, some people in the building that it has to be, has to be sprinkled for a liquor license, for an entertainment center. I don't think that we'd be required to put a sprinkler system even in a new construction, unless it was a town ordinance that all commercial structure would need sprinkler systems. Where it's an existing system, the Fire Marshal has gone to the extreme of making us match everything that we have downstairs. 24-hour monitoring system, horns, strobes, and so that if anything goes on downstairs or goes on upstairs, both parties will know instantaneously that there is a problem.
Also, you mean in the restaurant, there's no sprinkler system?
No. The only sprinkler systems that are in the restaurant are in the cooking area. That is mandated by the Department of Human Services and the Fire Marshal's office. That is a toilet brand-new system that was put in. So if anything in the kitchen, on the grills, anything catches fire in the kitchen area, there is an anse system that will take care of it.
Anyone else?
I guess the other question that we had, I think, a couple of weeks ago, had something to do with whether or not the septic had been okay finally, or enough to handle.
Right.
It's not a big difference, but just the fact that hasn't been...
The septic's all done?
No, the septic is, it's in, it's completely filled in. We hauled over 470, 4,700 yards of gravel. From one end to the, one end is almost between seven and a half to eight feet up in the air. What we're doing is we're letting it settle for the winter, before we go put another $65,000 worth of product on top of it to, so it doesn't settle anymore.
This, so the septic system, this is the one that's being used by the restaurant right now?
No, the new septic system is not attached anything.
Oh, okay. So you're still using the existing one?
Correct.
All right. Is the existing one large enough to handle the extra people, Kenny?
Depends on the seating in the restaurant at the time.
Oh, really? It's that close?
Yeah. The engineered system he has now, that they've got started, is for the whole complex.
Right.
At over 4,000 gallons a day, they estimate to go through that.
When would you, how soon would you want to be in there working upstairs? How soon would you want this to be a working concern with people heading out?
As far as myself and one other guy that's worked with me, I'd like to get in there, you know, almost as soon as I can. Right now, we're cramped in my basement and lacking productivity in that sense. As far as, you know, right now, we're currently going out to the job sites to meet our clients and things like that, and it's actually working out very well. People seem to really appreciate that. So like, as far as bringing customers in, I could certainly be patient, but as far as us getting in, I'm a little bit more eager.
Right.
In that sense, the two of us, if at all possible.
I would like to, we're in the process of finishing off this septic system, which is not a cheap septic system. It's about $100,000 that we have to come up with to put this in. 4,700 yards of gravel, and we still have to haul more in the spring to fill over the tops of the chambers. I would like to get Mr. Stanley in as soon as we can. Do the oak plumbing in upstairs. He just wants a workspace. The number of the people downstairs in the restaurant over the winter months are very few. They're only open, they're only gonna be open Friday and Saturday, and maybe Sunday morning. So the use of the septic system that's there, even this summer with the extended use of it, did have, we had no problems with it. Everything has been at the snuff. We are in the process of finishing it off. The main problem came, there's two main things that's coming up with the financing. We've already spent almost $50,000 in engineering fees and gravel fees to get this taken care of. Recommendations from the engineers, where we put seven and a half to eight feet of fill in the backside to accommodate this septic system, was to let it settle for one season. If you look at that diagram that Mr. Stanley gave you, yes, the yellow exists, the reason why they built it up seven and a half to eight feet was that for runoff purposes, it's a large slope going down. When this is completed, it will be a three-inch pitch from the back of the restaurant to the back of the parking area. The septic system is being designed for driving over it. It can be a parking lot if needed. We have no intention of putting a parking lot, I'd like to grass it in. There's plenty of parking on both sides of the building, but we're putting the system in so that parking, or whatever it can be, we need in the future if we can utilize it. The, hopefully, the way the plans are now, that once that settles down, we're gonna come in with compacters, pack it down. We have to put in another 23 inches of fill above the cement units, and that takes most of the back area. And then by this, by this summer, we'll be back online with a new system. This system contains four, four 2,000 gallon, 2,500 gallon septic tank systems with bubbly units. It's a very sophisticated system. There's only two of them in the state right now that are running out, and this is a brand-new system that they're making us put in. So that is why we're being very cautious with the, with the fill of the gravel, because when you take new gravel and let it, just put it in, the settling over the winter is gonna be substantial. And if you go put cement, cement units on top of it to disperse, everything has to be leveled. If it drops a couple of inches, we could be in real trouble, and most likely, it's gonna drop a lot more than a couple of inches.
All right. Anyone else, Kenny, anything? Do you see, you've been off a quiet tonight?
Well, I'm just thinking, on behalf of the applicant here, Joe and Jim, we did have a kind of a similar situation with INT, if I recall, where we made some kind of a waiver or gave them some outage, in terms of getting this system up to snuff, application of this issue.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I understand that, Kenny, but people, you know, with the history of that kind of situation. Well, I figured this would probably be contingent on, you know, Kenny's okay as far as, you know, if he thought the septic was, the one they've got now is gonna be good enough for these guys to get started, and a couple people, you know, during the day. If the restaurant's only gonna be open on the weekends now, that's gonna ease things up a little bit. Yeah, I figured we just, you know, whatever, if Kenny was happy, you know, if he signed off on it.
Yeah, we've got the new septic design, it's an engineered system out there, and the current one is 270 gallons a day is what it's rated at, and I've never had any issues out there with bubbling up or complaints, or odors, or anything like that from this field. I think with the, the usage of the restaurant quieting down, with a springtime completion of the other system, would seem reasonable.
When do you plan on putting the bathroom in upstairs? After the new septic's done?
Well, that's gonna be, that's gonna be depending on the code enforcement officer, the bathroom situation, we have discussed what's gonna happen if they need the bathroom, they're just gonna go down into the restaurant and use the restroom bathroom.
So, these plans aren't necessarily what's gonna happen upstairs, then?
That's exactly what's gonna happen upstairs.
Oh, so there is gonna be a bathroom?
There is a bathroom upstairs, yes, there's a full bathroom.
Right now? Or there will be?
There will be, there will be.
All right, up there.
That's what I'm saying, if we, if we open up, we do not need a bathroom per se to open up.
Right, okay.
Okay? Until we get to the new system.
Right, right, right.
The amount of bathrooms doesn't really calculate, it's employees, 'cause he's gonna use the one downstairs, if he had one upstairs, it really doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I was just...
Just like bed and towels.
Just wondering, yeah, all right.
I mean, if truth push comes to shove, I'd love to have, be able to put a bathroom, put the toilet in upstairs, and a lavatory in, have it all done, and just switch over the piping and the spring.
Right, right, right.
You know, if, that's the perfect...
Kenny, what kind of condition would you be comfortable with putting on this, in terms of this septic issue?
I would say the normal time that the restaurant gets busy again must be middle of June-ish, or that, Labor Day, and it's still weekends at that point.
That works.
That works for us.
Fourth of July, isn't it?
July 4th.
Yeah. Kind of festivity out of the little...
I think?
Kind of have some kind of festivity out of the New Bleach Field.
We better, we're cautious of it.
Why are you having to put in such an elaborate system?
That's state requirements. If I worked on this three years ago, it would cost me about $30,000. Now I have to, I have to put in four 2,500 gallon tanks with bubbly systems, I have to have it monitored, I have to have control devices inside the building, that if anything goes wrong with any of the tanks, we'll send them to one. I have to have a service contract with a service company, and it gets very expensive for a little outfit, you know, that's only open basically by time.
Is it a pump system?
Pump system, well, everything's gravity, but the pumps are all to do with the, with the breaking down of the, of the matter in the tanks.
It's a pre-treatment tank.
Pre-treatment tanks.
Grass, pre-strap interceptors.
Yeah. So, it's just a matter of the times that we're in. If we would've done this four years ago, we'd have no problems.
We were talking four years ago, though.
Well, yeah, but it's, you know, that's water over the dam, we gotta do it, but if we're gonna do it, we have to do it at today's standards. And today's standards are very strict.
All right. Can I see a copy of that Fire Marshal's report that's box around? Can you see the copy from the secondary?
Yeah.
Did you see that copy from your secondary?
Yeah, the construction permit?
Yes.
How many trips did that take you to get?
Just as many as it took me to get the septic system approved.
All right. Well, what, what does the planning board want to do next?
Can we review the standards and the septic conditions?
That's your pleasure. Let's see, we're looking at page 35. And who would like to read this?
I'm just gonna read it quickly, and would you please shout out NA, it's applicable. Standards are high of, ordinance number 6.6.3.7. Standards are full of condition, A.
Oh, do you mean I have to free read this? No, I'll...
No, just, okay. B. C.
Yes.
Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been adjusted to meet the performance standards in this ordinance.
I'd say yes, plus he's got permission from DOT.
E, not applicable?
Yeah, it's not a flood zone, is it? All right.
Yeah, adequate provision for disposal of all waste, well, some waste has been made or being addressed. G, adequate provision for transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made.
Are you gonna have any kind of hazardous materials on site up there? Any kind of X for blueprint, or any kind of A to jam?
Unless you consider a can of spray paint that has this material in it.
Whoa! As a matter of fact.
That'd be the only thing.
Let's erase that from the record, man, now, start over.
H, so G is not applicable, is that right?
Right.
H, stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on the adjacent property has been designed. What is your round call, Joe?
This isn't gonna impact, I mean, no.
Well, this is all inside, the existing building, nothing's being done to the outside, correct?
Just to the bleach field system.
And that has to get signed off by Ken when that's done. Does Ken see an issue with any drainage off the, off the existing building?
Actually, be more vegetation there after the system ends.
In the back?
Yeah, no, I don't see any.
All right, does anyone else have an issue with the stormwater runoff?
Would that be a condition you'd want, Ken, that they grass that bleach field area?
Some of it's parking area, though, well, it's designed anyways for heavy duty, whether it's parking eventually or not, I'm not sure.
At this, at this time, it was designed for the ultimate use of the property at this time. Total plans, I'd grass that all in, keep it loaded, plant shrubs.
Shrubs, can we play over the... Shrubs could be planted over the, the tanks?
No, they're gonna be planted around the exterior.
Gotcha.
Divide between the two parking lots. Now you get two different height parking lots, once you fill, once you get this system in, you, you have a parking lot that is going down the hill, and you have a parking lot that is now nice and level. There's gonna be a divide in there with bushes and plants and stuffs and.
Is that on this picture?
It's marked on the.
Is that what you saw?
Yes, the little dots.
Oh, I thought that was like some animal trail.
That could be.
They made a little, little row of rocks.
Okay. Maybe that could be delineated with Kenny. So that's covered. I, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. Again, they'll be taken care of by the new septic. J, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. Your well is up to snuff?
The well is 25 plus gallons per minute. It's pumping right now, pumping, there's two pumps in the well, one's feeding the campground, the other's feeding the restaurant building.
You see no issues with the, with these guys, they're not using much water anyway?
Exactly.
Alright, looks good, Kenny. Kenny, our visions for buffer strips and on-site landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise play, a huge dust storm and the like. Is there gonna be an issue with using, with a little bit more traffic using that bus drive next to that house?
The house belongs to me.
Right, but you're still running out to somebody, though.
Pardon me?
You're still running out to somebody, though, right?
Yeah, it's the owner, it's the manager of the restaurant that's living there.
And, well.
The only, the only thing, the only thing that's gonna happen, the only thing that's gonna happen in this is by a request of the state D O T, it's not in writing, they asked me if I would change the entrance to the house off the parking lot instead of off of 109, which I am going to do.
Okay.
We're gonna dig that out and, and put bushes in there. So there's only one entrance instead of two entrances side by side.
Gotcha, well, that makes, alright, that makes a little bit more sense. Now, is the restaurant eventually gonna be coming in through that way too? Or still coming in between your place and the one next door?
Depending on the, on the, the, what happens in the future to Wild Willys, if they're still there. We have intentions, if they're still there, of moving everything on that side for the restaurant, for, for Mr. Stanley, just for safety reasons of motorcycles, speeding cars and alcohol issues. But if for any reason they're not there, that parking, that parking lot in front of the restaurant as well as out back, half of it belongs to me and we have legal rights to the better half, so.
Alright, alright. L, I'll perform the standards in this ordinance, the proposed use fully met. Yeah. M. N A. Uh, this. Can we talk about conditions? Well, do we wanna, tack them on, yeah, do we wanna vote on this first and then add conditions? Sometimes we do. I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to make a motion on the, uh, well.
Why don't we do it as?
Yeah, why don't we do it all at once? So let's, let's get some, uh, conditions. What's been festering your little tiny brains, people? Kenny, you wanna throw in a date or, or, or you wanna work that out, that sounds reasonable, good, July 1st?
I, I think, I think the code enforcement officer has that pretty well locked down with the septic permit anyhow. He has control of, well, that's gonna be in place anyhow. But July 1 is definitely, is definitely acceptable.
Alright, septic will be done in, in usable July 1 of 2013. What else, what else would we concern with? I N K, the buffer strip between the residential property? Or between the two parking lots, too? Between the two parking lots, there's some delineation of that on paper between code enforcement and Jim.
Does it effectively be a little hill between the two parking lots, it'd be nice to see some sort of vegetation on that?
Well, that's what we, that, that, just for informational purposes only, that parking lot that goes out back belongs to myself. But I, I am gonna where the difference in the parking area is. It's all gonna be planted with shrubs and it's gonna make a, we're, we're trying to clean up the looks. This summer we cleaned up the front, changed the signs around, get rid of all the Mickey Mouse stuff. And once we get rid of, get that septic system in, we're gonna change the whole backside and do shrubs and plants.
So, once the septic's done, then the shrubs and whatnot'll go in, blocking off the, the two parking areas and along the edge of the bleach field or along the edge of the tanks. And when you split the drive, when you take out the driveway from the house to 109, that's gonna, you're gonna tear that up and you're gonna plant something along there, you would say?
Yes.
Although, it's gotta stay back from, it can't be too close to the highway, correct?
Yeah.
You'll be on top of that, or?
Once they remove it, they'll vegetate the ditch anyways, the ditch line.
Gotcha, yeah.
And the same with the, so that's a septic system that'll all be vegetated.
D O, D O T has basically determined the location on the sign as well as the outside corner is within three feet of the, of the state requirement. Inside, on my side, and three more feet than what they require. And any planting that I do along 109 has to also meet that same criteria.
Gotcha, alright. Did I hear you say before, when you were talking about the shrubs that you wanna put in between the two different levels of the driveways, to hold the hill from eroding away, were you talking about putting something, grass, putting something there to hold it so that it doesn't wash away?
The, the hill is gonna be, it's gonna come up, it's gonna have vegetation growing on the top, on the side as well as along the top with grass, shrubs. They'll probably be in three, four feet all around the parking space with the shrubs. The only place that you won't see shrubs is the physical operation of, over the septic system. If I grass that section system in over the 90 cement, uh,
Chambers.
Chambers, thank you. That, I will have, I will have shrubs on the front side of the chambers as well as the backside, all grass. And there's only one other safety issue that is being dealt with. On the backside, there's, there's an eight, about, gonna be an eight and a half foot drop off down to a big clearing. That needs to have some type of a safety rail system up there so that people won't drive over.
In the back, by the?
Where's that gonna be on?
Way in the back of the yellow.
Is it back here?
Yeah. That green, that green is about an eight foot, eight foot differential of nine.
Oh. Yeah. Would you guys consider it would be fair to have a little planting plan and maybe Joe could help Jim with? On file with Kenny? And then have the work completed by next fall? Planted?
I can't see the reason why we'd have to have, have a planted plan on file. I'm more than happy to stipulate, I'm more than happy to stipulate that Mr. Paul would have control of what I put in. You know, I'll work with him for the, for the, cause right now I have no idea what the vegetation will be.
Well, it wouldn't have to be that specific, I was just thinking of shrubs here, grass here, just something sort of.
I can, I can add that, basically add that to the map board.
Just so Kenny has a total.
Yeah.
You have like a completion date, maybe to, a speculative date that you planned out for vegetation installed by?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be by the end of next summer.
Yeah.
It'd be a summer project for me. When I get down my rock walls.
Anything else?
The other thing that came up before was the, was wondering if there's gonna be like a lot of maps being stored and?
It, you know, basically, right now, we've, we've been working for a year and a half and we're still working on our first fire drill flat file, we have even half filled that and one standing file cabinet, we're still two thirds of the way through filling that. So I mean, with, you know, God bless, if we're in business in fifty, sixty, next fifty or sixty years, we might start to accumulate a lot, but we don't, we've got plenty of room just where it says closet on both sides of this to do these cabinets right into the, right into the size. And I, I can't see us upgrading that.
Full length, full length of the building, there's a walking, walking space set in four, four and a half feet that you can walk the whole, whole length of the building on both sides.
And you can shove it up and put all your.
Right, we could actually make a little bit in the wall and, and make cabinets right in there if we need to.
Are you thinking fire safety is added or?
Yeah, I think that was, that was the concern.
That was my thought a long time ago, just having a whole library of server gear stuff on top of a restaurant, but. Um, but if it's gonna take that many years to accumulate.
Well, with computer technology today.
They have to keep everything, they have to keep everything.
With computer technology today, a lot of the information is on computers.
You have to keep, you have to keep all, you have to keep one full set of everything, right?
Correct, we have to keep, we have to keep a copy of each plan that we submit with our signature and seal on it. And again, you know, the file cabinet that we've got for that is, is half the size of the one that's up there and it's, we haven't even half filled it yet in two years, we just have one cabinet, I mean. We're really only talking fifty, sixty pieces of paper stacked on top of each other, you know. And then we, we keep all of our deed research just to have it in the future projects. That takes up, takes up a little bit more space in that stuff, but it's still.
That's the time of day.
Um, we, again, I'm very comfortable, I, I, I wouldn't be moving into this location if I didn't think it could hold us for the next, you know, twenty years anyways with all that stuff. If we keep expanding and things go well and we have storage issues, then we would need a bigger place anyways because business is really picking up.
And they do have laundry, heat, uh, heat and smoke, are there heat detectors up there? Or the heat, smoke, uh, the whole line, everything, everything, sirens, strobe lights, pulse stations. Everything that there is out there except for a sprinkler system is being mandated by the Fire Marshal Office.
Well, I wasn't thinking of it as being a source for the fire anyway, just as a, unless you're planning on top of the kitchen, that's all.
Oh.
Well, which is a nice, nice thing about the kitchen setup, the way the restaurant is, the kitchen's in a totally separate addition, completely separate from the main building.
Kitchen, the kitchen is over in this, in this area, will be ordered on this end of the building.
Does anyone else have any concerns, conditions they'd like to ponder? No? Kenny, someone, help us just, maybe Brenda can recap those conditions and we'll take a vote.
The septic system should be finished and functional by July 1st, 2013. Buffer strip out between the two parking lots and when the residential driveways are moved along there, a railing along drop off in the back of the property. Basic plant, uh, planting plan on this map. And a completion date at the end of the summer of, of the planting process.
Sounds good.
The sign is all separate from this, the whole sign?
Well, that would go through Kenny additionally.
Does it, does it go through us?
No. I don't think, no?
No.
Kenny, how's operation, do we wanna touch on that?
It's a pretty minor use, the existing use is a storage use up there, so, which is actually more of a hazardous use than the business use that it's converting to. It's not really a noise, but.
I don't care, I mean, whatever, what are you comfortable with, Joe?
I would like to say six to six if I could, just, that would more than cover me.
So that means you'd never be there working till late trying to get something done for the next day?
I guess myself personally, I, I could be burning the midnight oil at some point. You know, I was thinking more when we might have client time stopping in.
That's what our arms division generally deal with, is people coming in and out, not necessarily somebody burning the midnight oil per se. Five days a week, six, six?
Um, I'd like to include Saturday if I could for spring, for springtime. But well, year round, I guess you'd be more comfortable, but that would be my focus when asking the question.
Five a week, six to six, six days a week? Yeah, good for you. How's that sound? Anybody have an issue with that? Kenny?
You want seven days a week? It's such a minor use, I don't see it as a big issue.
Would you be dealing with the customers maybe on a Sunday, other than just you running yourself?
Boy, the last twelve years I've done this, it's happened maybe once or twice.
I do it all the time.
Yeah, that's your busy day, that's my day to rest, I hang out a little bit. You know, if you, I, I don't mind adding it, if, if it would make it easier for everyone, but I, I think it would be very rarely used.
I don't know, I don't know that it makes any difference, so we, would you get to arrest him if he's there on Sunday? Shut him down?
It would have to, you know, regular thing.
Six days a week, six to six? Or seven days a week, six to six?
Six days a week, six to six.
Alright, sounds good. You got that, may I make a motion? Absolutely. That we accept the application for Joe Stanley's rental office above the Apple Color Restaurant as, as we walk through the standards and conditions as read by Brenda. Any further discussion? Alright, we know what the conditions are, we're all comfortable with those? Alright then, let's see, is everybody here tonight? One, two, three, four. Yeah, sorry, you guys will make the vote. I'm gonna say, alright then, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? It's a done deal, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
No, no, we'll keep it, we'll keep it with the, with the. Alright, now we will discuss the conditional use modification for Tim Aiken at 1523 Apple Ridge Road. And so who wants to explain what's going on, Kenny or Mr. Aiken? Alright, how about Mr. Aiken? What is it, how? Wait a minute, Ken, tell us why he's in here for, for this issue.
He has a current conditional use for an outdoor facility out on Acton Ridge Road. He's looking to expand it by adding a bay. He can increase his area up to 25% without a conditional use or amending his existing one. And we, I calculated the existing facility, the second floor, his sheds, his offices, that was around 1,600 square feet. The addition, he's looking to add 720 square feet, so he's over on the 25% by 300 square feet roughly. So it's pretty minor, he did have a huge wood storage lean-to over it that wasn't really part of the business, but yet the wood was for both the business and it, I didn't calculate that. It's a pretty minor addition to it. His lot coverage, he was just over by a, I think, point four or five. So he'd have to do a little bit of replanting out there, but the area he's proposing is already non-vegetated. So he's not creating any more non-vegetated areas, but.
Alright. So why don't you tell us exactly what it is that you're wanting to do? As far as?
Basically, about, I don't know, one, one bay, one and a half bay and had an office, but on an office.
And this is where the existing lean-to shed that used to house the, the wood furnace and the pile of wood is?
And we also want to tear down the shed that's by the road.
The old, the old circle car garage?
Yes. And then take the waste oil, that's a.
And then take waste oil that's in there and put it in the other shop.
On a concrete floor?
Yeah, yeah. Basically the same way it is now.
No drains in the floor?
No. No drains.
Do those two, deletions able to move addition?
No.
The new addition's slightly bigger. That's.
Yeah. He's just a little over the twenty-five percent. So it's a pretty minor review, I thought. Uh, twenty by thirty-six is the size of the addition he's looking to do to the building now. Which when you compare it to the existing garage, it's going to double its size, but when you're looking at his existing workspace, he's got the garage upstairs in the shed. Plus then there was the wood storage area that I didn't calculate as one area.
Do we have, uh, oh, there is some stuff falling around here.
There's some photos there.
Oh, pictures. Is my truck in those pictures?
I was looking for them.
Jesus, oh, we're off the half of, uh.
Excuse ourselves.
Jesus, craters. Well, what is it? What's, what's our process then for if we decide to go ahead and, do we have to go through a public hearing?
I think so. I think you're just amending the current conditional use that he does have. I've gotten no complaints up there from any of the neighbors.
I don't really see anything in here that, uh, you know, says how we can really.
Deal with it.
Yeah. I mean, we can certainly make up something. If it's not addressed here, then, I don't see why we, I don't see why we couldn't. Kenny, I'm looking at page thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Yeah. Maximal white company in the rural district, is in the rural district.
Yeah.
And gives him thirty percent for non-existencies, so.
I was wondering then if that was commercial.
He doesn't live in the garage. It's from my home.
No. So that was the easy part anyways. He only had a hundred and seventy-one square feet to replant if he had to.
So does that give a toll of the thirty percent?
Uh, the area that was required him to come here today was the twenty-five percent expansion of the existing facility. So where he's expanding more than twenty-five percent of his facility, it allowed, it required him to come back and talk to the plan board and give you guys an update as far as uh, where, how, um, significant you guys determined it to be. It seems like a minor.
Uh, and what's his, that, that limits twenty-five. What's his expansion proposed? Did you see? Twenty-seven, twenty, district?
Rural.
Rural. Why, why was, why was he limited to, uh, expansion? Where, where was that?
Uh, additional use?
Oh, we did that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On thirty-three.
Thirty-three. A increasing area twenty-five or more. Oh, that just triggered him.
To come back?
Yes, coming to us versus just going to Ken. It just says no changes shall be made and approved conditional use without approval of the change by the planning board. So hey, piss tash.
But what about this light company issue? Is that an issue with them?
No, especially with thirty percent. He's at twenty-five, twenty-four, five, so.
So we don't have to go through the whole conditional use permanent process again? We just have to approve this change?
I think so, yeah. You know, unless somebody has, you know, it's, it's a, it's a little, I mean, it, it's another building, but he's knocking down one. He's knocking down a, a shed.
And it says no changes shall be made and then approved use without the approval of a change by the planning board.
Right. And he's not, he's not, the, the use isn't changing at all. It's still, uh, you know, still the garage. The oil is still to be handled in, in a contained way. Uh, none of the other conditions are changing.
I wonder if Mr. Aiken would consider signing something that he would service Hondas.
Don't talk to a Honda.
We could talk.
She takes care of this.
I do take care of her.
She takes good care of us.
No sin.
Um.
Your balls whack, I don't know.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? You understand what, what it is he wants to do? The shed on the side, knock it down, put a two-story building, two-story building there. A bay downstairs, office upstairs.
No.
No?
No upstairs.
Oh, no upstairs?
Just the office in the front.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Oh, wait, so the bay is not gonna be in your existing garage. It's gonna be where the shed is by the door. Not that it matters really, but.
It's basically. Off of this right here. So we're gonna take this and pull it out.
Right. And you're putting it down there?
Right here, right off the end of it. We stand in the ridge line right over.
Oh, I see. Okay, like that.
This way.
Yeah.
Okay.
And enter from the back, backside?
Yeah, drive in the bay from the back.
Frame constructions.
Timber frame, yeah.
Metal roof?
Metal roof.
Kenny, any questions? Uh, does the board have any issues with this?
You're gonna be, you're gonna be heating the office, heating the?
Yeah, the whole, the whole thing's heated.
You're gonna have to add heater? Is it what you had in the?
What I have now should be sufficient.
Is parking an issue at all? Additional traffic?
No, it's just me, so. Sorry, do too many at once. I keep it very clean.
Is that fence gonna go down too, or is that gonna stay?
I'm gonna add two more pieces of fence to cover where.
Where the garage was.
So you can't see the cars when you drive by.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Keep that coverage.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one that we, uh, will we approve the change in the condition use? Yes. To, uh, whatever his application has been to code enforcement as far as, you know, the size type, what he's knocking down. Yep, second. Any further? Thank you, boys. Uh, any further discussion, comments, questions? Kenny, do you have one that makes sense?
Yep.
All right, then. Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alls opposed, nay? It's a done deal. Good luck, Sonny.
What do we want to think about?
Oh!
It was a question on a sign. I wanna do an actual real sign, get rid of what I have, all the other junk.
Good thinking. You got no tires?
Picture of the.
Uh, the mad cow?
Yeah. This is basically the sign I wanna do. And step it back from the road.
Can you name the garage? Six and a half by three and a half?
Yeah.
Uh, and where were you thinking of?
Basically where that shed door is.
Okay.
Put it right there.
The shed, you mean the garage door?
Well, the, the thing's gonna be torn down.
Yes, yes, yes.
The first probably with the doors.
All right.
So it's waiting.
Perpendicular to the road or parallel with the road?
It's double sided. I was just gonna do it.
Perpendicular to the road. Are you applying for?
No, no, I'm.
Um, well, that would, that would go through, that would go through.
Yeah, it does my shirts.
Jesus.
From that cow.
No rules. I mean, it, it, the sign would go through you, correct?
Yep.
And then you'll address all the other familiar signs out there. Tire sign.
Yeah, I just sent that the other day.
That was getting pretty advertising.
Just try somewhere.
It was colorful though.
Rides was pretty.
It was nice to travel by. Uh, all right, you'll, so, talk to Ken about that then. He'll handle the, whatever the sign did. Cause we've got regular ordinance for that now. It explains the sizes and usage and that kind of.
Guys are all laughing. He's in hospice.
I've seen the sign. I go past it.
Well, then, are you okay to Ken? Is there something else you're looking for?
Nah, I'm just reading the thirty-two square feet. There was a glitch in there, but.
All for the sign?
Yeah.
Avoid shine.
Oh, yeah, the end of the sign.
Well, at, at first, um, it was actually this particular business that I noticed extra signs for. And I thought there was a limit to it, but the limit's in commercial zones. He's in a residential zone with a commercial use. So that's just something we'll address the ordinance maybe over the winter if we wanna call it commercial use.
Gotcha.
Versus commercial zones, I'm gonna apply to A, B, and C. So really, he was kinda unregulated out there, but.
Well, that's why we like it in rural.
Rural.
Well, then we're all set. You're all set.
That's basically beginning the next week?
Yeah.
I'm lucky. Yes, I'm good evening.
Well, you too, buddy. Take care.
Thanks.
Uh, so why don't you, what are you going to try and keep track of sometime this way, this vulnerable side of it?
We have the ordinance that we usually just write in constantly. Updating, maintaining.
Oh, the two of you? Good, glad to hear. All right, now, stormwater ordinance, Linda Shire's response, uh, roads residential sites. Do you all got a copy of that? Brenda, that was two pages, right?
Did you all get one? I did that.
That's, this is, this was from her too, right? This was in my packet.
Yes, that's what.
Yeah.
Yes. Did you?
Well, this is her update. This one should basically explain how she had gotten the numbers. But this was an answer of a.
She must have, this is a question.
So take it, may I read this and forget the comments? Question?
Well, you made one of these and you created the other one. One tree used to blame to the roads and the other blamed it upon the residences. Why is it just giving it to that?
Wait a minute.
Well, the road sites were contributing a large amount to some of the phosphorus. The residential site for a much greater area total. Whereas on this, the insert says, while there remain more residential sites identified on the road, then most of them were minor. The road sites, on the other hand, that are much harder, larger erosion problems. So which of these are we?
I thought both of them said that they dealt with more residential sites, but that the roads contribute more phosphorus, more runoff.
The big problem.
Yeah, even though, because it's much easier to deal with the residential sites than it is for them to get out there and, you know, tear up the roads and burn them and all that kind of jazz was my thinking.
Does it have to do with the fact that there's so many residential sites?
Pardon me?
Does it have to do with the fact that there's so many residential sites and a smaller amount of roads? And even though the roads might have more of an issue because of the number of homes, even though individual homes, you know, lots wouldn't give off a lot. But the numbers contribute a lot.
I don't know. I think it's just they're set up to work with residential sites versus roads. You know, they'll do little jobs around camps that help, uh, divert runoff and, and that type of thing. They're not really set up to regrade roads. Uh, or bring in riprap and do that kind of stuff. Maybe driveways and stuff they can, you know, fiddle with a little bit. And I thought that's pretty much what she was, you know, they spent more time with residential stuff, but the roads probably contribute a greater extent of runoff just because of the, you have the big impervious surface that's just running eventually into the water. Whereas around the homes, you know, they can, they can address it easier. They can alleviate the, the runoff problems easier.
Plus it has to go through the residential site from the road usually anyways.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, because the residences are more, closer to the water than the roads are for the most part. So the roads may be causing problems for the homes, you know? If the road wasn't there, there might not be that big of a problem with some of the homes.
Right. But she says the same thing here, only she says the roads.
The sentence pops out to me was in the sheets entitled Roads and Residential Sites Back to Man. The second sentence, they begin with, why are the road sites?
Well, what's the difference? It's, I still am not seeing any difference. Except for it's saying that it creates problem one and the residence is creating problem one the other.
I, when I was speaking to her the other day, I asked, I indicated to her that our confusion was arising from the fact that she, in her initial paragraph, there was clearly a, a graded number of non-point source, uh, pollution sites identified for residences and versus roads. And, and then she went on to say that, I don't know, fifteen to sixteen percent were roads and then, uh, sixty-two to sixty-five percent were residents. And I, what, I indicated to her that our confusion was arising from not so much the numerical, the graded number of, of sites chosen by, uh, to remediate, but we wanted to get our hands around the, the relative impact of those two types of development on the lakes. Road, uh, construction and rebuilding and existence versus residential sites. I think she answered it, of course, yeah. In that one sentence.
In which, which page, which one are you reading? The roads and residential sites or?
Yeah, second sentence that she just.
Right.
I, I just thought it would be useful in, in developing.
I read that, but it just doesn't, it contradicts the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Developing her answer.
There were input there. This is things up.
In developing her answer, I thought it would be useful for us just to get our arms around, uh, some, you know, factual data surrounding the problem that we're dealing with with the stormwater work. Cause we were, we were under the impression, um, that the roads were the logic contributor in a number of instances. We've, we've stated that in, in meetings and I thought it would be useful to get that clarify.
It sounds to me like an individual residential site is not a major contributor. But when you take it in total, then it is major more so than the roads. Individual roadside contributes more than an individual residential site. An individual roadside contributes more than an individual residential site. When you combine all the residences, that's where the bulk of the pollution comes in.
Because they're talking a hundred and ninety-six residential sites. And then they addressed twenty-seven of them.
She says they're equally important.
And they ended, ended up, just the twenty-seven were producing forty times as sediment a year from the twenty-seven residential out of the hundred and ninety-six. Which equates to thirty-seven pounds of phosphorus. So, I mean, if you looked at all hundred and ninety-six, it would, if you count all the sediment. It's significant.
Yeah.
Anyway, I forgot it. Useful information I thought to put in the note.
It seems like they're picking away at the road sites because there's fewer of them. They said, it was just the end of the first paragraph. To rank over, prevent ten times as sediment from entering the lakes. And then, oh, three different road sites. So it's like the, there's fewer road sites, so it's, it might be easier for them to address them.
If you're going to address a site, the road sites.
Easier to employ and...
Individual residential, residential sites.
Yeah. But you have to have a community effort to fix the road. Versus an individual residence easy to, as I said, come to fix is please.
Is that what they say?
Please.
Well, now, what question is this all pertaining to? Is this the whole idea that, that whatever efforts we've been making so far aren't good enough because the lakes are still getting dirtier? Is it that?
It was merely to, she was, in her responses, she was clarifying the paragraph that we were looking at in our last meeting. Which was confusing to some. When I spoke to her, I stayed with, I thought the confusion was arising from this word. Confused on the relative impact of those two types of development. And we needed some guidance, that's all.
Sixty residential accounted for sixty-two to sixty-five percent of the sites. And the road seventeen to eighteen percent of the sites were, were why so all of a sudden come from the roads? And there's so many fewer sediments.
It just means we have to sit in judgment with the stormwater ordinance.
Right. But, okay, I guess my question is, it's a very vague question, but how can we improve lake water quality? We can't, when you're addressing one individual site, you can't expect that one site to clean up the entire area around it, right? And you can't expect it to compensate for other people's erosion.
No, but anytime people start doing something, the stormwater ordinance is going to, will somehow kick in effect.
Right.
And they'll, these individual sites, these individual residences or whatever, will have to apply these methods that we've come up with. And all these, you know, you get enough of these, eventually it's going to make some kind of significant impact. It's incremental. Oh, that's the word, arty beauty!
Well, I know, I get it from here on in. I get that part. I just don't understand blaming the past on the present.
We're not in the plan here. We're planning.
If you're, if you're doing a renovation, you can't be asked to compensate for your neighbor's erosion.
No, 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 you're not. Just your site. That's all. Right, so please, thank you. And eventually, it's, it's like when they came up with, with the septic ordinance around the lakes years ago. People had to bring in some, you know, site plan, register their septic system. And eventually, you know, we got people to, you know, fix their septic on their own. Just because they realized, hey, you know, so these things take time.
That's why they fixed it.
Can you help us maybe in the next meeting with some proposed work, that, that concept you had about performance guarantee? That made sense to us. I don't think you were aware this last time we do it.
No, no, so...
We gave you a bronze plaque. I don't know if you've had it.
Must be on my wall.
Maybe we could set case of pressure with Kenny's help.
So we want to, we want to throw that on the agenda for next meeting? Revisit the stormwater with Kenny's input on...
Yeah, now, I mean, we've got some more pieces to it that I think, I don't think there's the understanding of it. Yeah, I think we can work through it the same way we worked through Forest's proposal.
All right. So we'll throw that on the agenda for next time. What else have we got? Anything?
Anything yet?
Oh, this is not planning to delay it. Let it throw it out there.
It is something else. Do you want to record it for posterity?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Gavin and I are sponsoring a little hearing that is being held next Thursday at seven PM upstairs regarding that energy policy, climate change petition that was circulated successfully. And it's going to be voted on on November sixth as a referendum ballot.
Is there a selectmen's meeting next Thursday?
Yeah, and we're on the dock as the first night.
Okay, okay, so it's as part of their, okay, gotcha.
Instead of, oh, yeah.
Super. Um, anyone have anything else?
I've got one best possible location that just came in.
Really? Super. Anybody we know?
Neither of us, okay.
Any problems? Wait a minute, I've seen this place.
Twelfth Street?
Yeah. Holy smokes alive, look at that!
That's just a, the site plan up there, guys.
Ain't that beauty?
Currently it's forty-two feet big, they're gonna push it back, so it's sixty.
Pushing this, knocking this down, building a new.
Yeah, on the back side, you can see the retaining walls and the tree coverage. They're trying to protect that area.
How much bigger?
It's the house, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's the one, yeah. Yeah, I think it is. Kenny's twelfth street, just so we're paying around.
Yeah.
Where the mailboxes are.
Yeah, go ahead and take a right.
Uh, we ever done with this house in the past for any reason?
No, we've done the neighbors though.
Okay, all right, all right.
Uh, knock it down, replace it. It is currently forty-two from the lake. The new one would be sixty.
Can you go back any, uh...
Oh, it's got that area of, uh, trees and walls, and that's the area they were kind of trying to save.
Now, is it level behind the house and it kind of drop off towards the water?
It drops, yeah, we're basically going down that old driveway.
It's going to be a walkout basement or...
Yeah. The architects, I haven't dealt with these people before, but they're extremely environmentally friendly.
So, so is the, is the rock wall, is it just aesthetic?
The one behind it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't hold up any then?
It's got some earth behind it, but...
Is that picture different than this one?
Yeah, this is toward the lake down the way, yeah. There's plenty of pictures on the back side. I'd recommend this would be a good one for Joey Anderson to be involved with.
Yeah, I hear you.
So, Kenny, help us out a bit, like that, the two houses to the west of that, is the, is the existing structure on this parcel roughly equivalent frontage to those relative to the shore?
Depth wise?
Existing, yeah.
Uh, it's a little closer in front of it. It's closer to the lake.
Than the, than the two are joining?
Yeah, so it's coming back another twenty feet. It'll be almost parallel with them.
So let it be further back from the water because it's, it's a little bit of a point there, isn't it?
Yeah, they're, they're coming back another twenty feet roughly from the water. So they're just tucking in right against this stand of trees. Yeah. And the trees are going to be over the house or what? They're trying to save all they can back there. Yeah. But they'll be, they'll be a hazard per se, and then they can take them down in the future if they want to. Yep, and replant. Great. Are they going to be replanting on the, on the water side of the thing as it is? Where this area here, it's required to be where the existing construction is at. So that white area is the, um, is getting moved back, huh? That's pretty cleaned area. Yeah.
So this is twenty feet further back from the...
Correct.
Would they be amenable to some good stormwater design?
Oh, definitely. They're, they've mentioned all types of different areas that they want to go. I thought they said they were taking out the patio. I wouldn't want to quote them on it, but I believe they were, they, they were interested in getting rid of that whole thing, uh, the boat ramp. Exactly, yeah, so this would be a good one for Joey Anderson to be involved with and implement best management practices all over the whole site. Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, mine's right up with the driveway. Yeah, and it's, and it's steep.
Is there a thirty percent increase?
Yes.
Is all this structure within the hundred feet?
I think the back side, but just barely.
They're going back to sixty, right?
The, the front of it, yeah.
So, so it's not...
Front sixty, so back...
Right now it's forty-five feet away and they're going to, and they're putting it sixty feet away, correct? Forty-two. Forty-two to sixty? Is there any septic work?
Yeah, brand new system.
Where is it currently set?
That on the map. Pre-treatment as well, also, as well.
Uh, is this something the board would want to go out and take a look at first? Or do you think, uh... What pictures you have and Ken's information is enough? It's up to you guys. If you want to go out and take a look, we could sort of do that.
I wouldn't want to take a look.
Ken, do you have any uncertainties about the position, you know, about the solution that's been...
No, by the time you've got the septic system on the back and the space between the septic and the house, it's, it's basically pushed back as far as it can with the septic system there. And with York County Water and Soil working with them for best management practices, I think that'll take care of that, those issues. Thought the old system dealing with the house was in the front of the house. Didn't have to click the hell this up.
In the front, you mean towards the water?
Yeah, the old system was, I thought.
Cool.
Dealing with it easy, you know?
Just like maybe not full pipes, huh?
Gravity, it's a gravity system. Got to pump every three years of system. The pre-treatment, and that's similar to, um, like Crapabia was talking about, except for with this commercial use, they're requiring him to have a maintenance agreement with the company. And when you're not using the company, they're the first ones to call to tell us that he's not using the company.
Really?
Yeah.
What is that percentage of total lock area?
They, uh... Do you have existing, you? Yeah. Got half an acre of law, okay? Currently it's twenty-nine point two percent lock coverage. It'd be twenty-eight point six after they're done. If they take up that patio thing or the... Uh, like I said, that was just when I talked to him over the phone. I don't see it on this. Oh, so that would equal that, okay. Correct.
So I don't understand, are they going up in their, in their increase?
Yeah, the percentage.
A lot of it will be the, the volume going up.
No, that's...
If their lock coverage is going down, then they're going to be revegetating a lot of it.
Revegetating some.
Yeah, right.
Well, what are you guys, what are you guys comfortable with? Do you, do you want to visit the site first before you make a determination? Or do you have enough information?
Doesn't look like it's due to issues. Steep slope, but reasonable.
At least where the house is at anyway.
The thirty percent expansion, they using twenty-six on the floor area and fifteen percent on the volume. I haven't gone through the, run the calculation that was, uh...
Is taking the boat ramp always that officially on the plan or is that something you've...
That's something they talked about, um, protecting water quality. They just bought the place and that was one of the first things they talked about when they were looking at it in the spring.
What's the word for that? Beaches?
It's nice. Uh, no, it's vegetated. I'll throw it back in there.
Kenny, I'm just confused about that, that's on the lock coverage issue.
It's being reduced by almost one percent.
How would that happen?
I guess their grandfather, they obviously find their lock coverage versus what's existing and the ordinance is twenty percent, so that their grandfather says it exists.
I believe that whole driveway, uh, they've got a word of this demo and removal of existing two-bedroom house. Removal of existing septic field, wood deck, asphalt drive, concrete boat ramp.
Is it a...
Yeah.
Can you make them, uh, remove that entirely right up to as, as far back as you can see?
I believe that was the intention of, is that crosshairs mean it again special? Yeah. That's remained and then that's removed.
So the gray one's here. No, 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 it's, it's...
I can keep a fair amount.
That's just line. This is a cross. This is a, so where the hell is this though?
I wonder if it's this new area here that pulls it?
Yeah, but that, yeah, but that's new.
This could be the part.
This says existing impervious to remain unless... Well, maybe it's supposed to be this, I don't know. Do they have, does this, this is the boat ramp and this is the driveway leading up to the boat ramp, right? So this they're going to take out.
Yeah.
For sure.
Ben, I think it's going to be landscape space because it's that, is that possible?
Yeah, but it's got the lines.
It's got the lines because it's existing. So you have two implications there.
Proposed.
That's one that's supposed to be, um...
It's a proposed improvement. That's what they said they wanted to set a stairs down here too, so I think...
So you're not vegetating it? And I gotta be driving down there, I'm thinking?
No.
Kenny, they already suggested that this be, could still be a pathway, but they get pervious.
Yeah.
So that it's part of the, you know, L I P.
It'd better if it was just vegetation.
Yeah.
Well, they could have it.
It'd be cheaper for them, too.
Make it there with the... Vegetate it.
You know, there's no, yeah, but there's no lot problem with the pathway, just make it so it's porous.
Exactly.
Right.
What does vegetation consist of? It's not, this is, it's not like they put grass in it.
Actually, the D E P allows them to put grass back in when they remove the structures. They, I know, that's one of their approved methods.
Well, it's good to hold them to ground pretty well, that's for sure.
Right.
Initially, anyway.
And then you go, oh, well, that's what they have to, that's, no, that's what they deal with though, is the fertilizing. That's what you can't get, you're not supposed to go crazy with.
This project brings up, this project brings up the situation that has made me uncomfortable in the past with these things because once we say, okay, this is okay, we don't have to visit the site, we have no leverage on, you know, suggesting or making this part of the permit process, certain conditions. And Kenny has told us in the past that we don't have any purview or anything sets where the house goes. And I, I guess I chink on that point, but, um, it would be, I would be hopeful that we could make suggestions in, in the form of a memo or something to the COVID boss, not the Senator Joe, in the review of these. Or we further talk over the fall and winter about what our purview on these things, you know, actually is or could be. That would be an animal to the COVID boss. Because we could certainly rewrite that ordinance if we wanted to get into a missing match, but I don't think we want to do that.
So that would make us the landscapers?
No, it would merely make us plenty more that is able to give advice in the terms of suggestions for development or redevelopment of a facility such as this.
Yeah, but it looks like a big project, I mean, it'd be nice to go see it.
A lot of times, it helps though if the applicant, we either visit on-site and we discuss things, or they come in and talk to us sometimes, because then it's, there's a lot, there's a lot more give and take. And, you know, you throw ideas out, they go, oh, yeah, we could do something like this. So this might be a site that we may wanna visit before we proceed any further. I mean, there's enough, I think, there's enough little questions that some of us have that you might wanna look at the site and get a better idea of it. And if we could have the homeowner there, specifically, you could possibly look at this driveway boat ramp deal and see how far they were planning on, you know, how much they were planning on taking out and so on and so forth.
Are they local or posted?
No. Or where? Your boy? As a rural...
Mass, yeah.
What about this porch or, it's actually gonna be closer, I'm looking at it. Is that what I'm looking at, that right there?
Yeah.
Actually be closer to the water?
Yeah, but I was not gonna admit that, bring it back to you. About patio, great.
Kenny, when you spoke of this architect being more available to environmental issues, whatever, does he have any kind of points within the drawings to kind of bolster that any?
Um, just from talking with them, you can tell that was their integrity and that was where they were leaning towards. My recommendation would be to let York County Water and Soil implement as many best management practices as CC's fit out there.
Would it be feasible that Joe would go on the sidewalk with us, or it would just be too much?
His time and your time's probably never gonna match up.
Yeah. So we wanna go out there, we can look at it before he went out there, so we have some idea of what he were reporting back, about what he thought.
For his design for what he would implement?
Yeah.
He's probably just gonna agree with the architect's plans, I would imagine. We're gonna have the architect send him a set of landscape plans to see if there's any other best management practices he'd...
Did he include those in this?
I didn't see him, we talked all spring about this and they're just finally ready to go, so this just came in the mail the other day.
Well, what do you guys wanna do? You wanna go out and visit the site first, we wanna go ahead. And throw some conditions on the best possible location.
That's, I mean, that's what's puzzling to me about these permits is it's fuzzy, particularly after the sign, as to where our authority to make any decisions on these types of permits. Obviously, I'd like to have a more, um, have the board have some input in delaying the conditions other way, just where the foundation is located. But I guess maybe we have to look at the language and all this.
Well, if we wanna make other conditions other than just distance from the water, we really have to go on-site and look at it, otherwise we're just throwing crap out there from whatever we're guessing.
My question is, is that within our authority to do that?
We can certainly, we can certainly go and look, and if we can have some, some person familiar with the applicant there, we can discuss some of these things and, you know, get both sides to agree on certain issues. I honestly, why we couldn't do something like that. But as far as saying, you know, you have to do this, you have to do this, without really seeing it and without really hearing from the person, you know, they may not be sure how much of the, let's say, the boat ramp driveway they wanna take out. But if we were discussing it with them, you know, maybe we could say something and they'd say, oh, yeah, hey, that makes sense. Why don't we do this and this? And then, you know, it's something that's easily handled versus, you know, us holding a mallet over their head.
Are we going on wood?
I think if he's got a professional architect and has a professional, um, environmentalist, York County Water and Soil, I don't think you guys are going to have anything else that they already have an address.
I'd be happy with that if Joey hadn't signed up for the site project. But to me, still close my way.
That's the... That's water all the day under the bridge.
Yeah, I did remember. Years ago.
Maybe we could, uh, maybe we could, then I would suggest we go ahead and schedule a picture with this close to a representative of either these guys' coolest or the office, you know, the landscape officer or Joe.
Or the yoga or...
Or Ken, if he's got the latest insight for it. You've been along to just talk to these people, the architect and the homeowner, correct?
Yeah.
But it just points out a gray area within our own that I think maybe needs reconsidering as to the period of the site location of developments. One for eleven four, is that what it is?
It's right through to here?
Page six. I just, I sense that we're gonna have more and more of these, uh, the site quality projects in the future that are only gonna be more contentious unless we have some ability to condition them in the light of what we're learning about now, in terms of the stormwater danger. I mean, when you look at what our own state is not mandated with any kind of work in the D, in the Schrödinger zone, they're really getting more rigorous than I had thought at sea in terms of necessity of devices to handle, you know, pretty small thresholds and certain things. And I guess my thinking is we, our work gotta be in keeping with that and Linda's advice corrupts that with a more rigorous view of what's going on in the region. It's out of touch.
All right, then, we're gonna go out there and take a look at this first, all right?
It says the planning board shall require replanting as part of the, who's the planning board in that, in the replanting of vegetation?
I think Tom's thinking that the planning board may be able to tell them how to do the project also. Way to make the road, how to vegetate it, where to do it, the whole choreographed event.
No, not to that extent at all.
Definitely at the signs.
Boys, boys!
I agree with Ken on that.
I was merely appalled. I was merely appalled that they were gonna try to go down. But they were gonna do the project here. It looked incredible.
I know, but in the past, when we've gone out and looked at a site and met with the homeowner, different things have come up and we've been able to come to gentlemen's agreements on doing various things that weren't just specific to forty feet away from the water, fifty feet away from the water, something like this. It doesn't happen all the time, but it's certainly, it's an easy, it's an easier way of maybe getting, getting both of us to see the light about something, the planning board, the homeowner.
Yeah, it's nice to, for them to get an idea of what the homeowner thinks about.
Right, and they may not be aware, well, they may not be aware of all the things that they can do.
They're just moving into our community, so they're not really familiar necessarily, I mean...
Yeah, I'm thinking more about, more of the land versus, you know...
Well, they might like to hear that people are encouraging what they're thinking of doing, you know, depending on, you know...
Gotcha, guys, I don't, I'm not advocating for them in the planning board in a role of abandoning practices. It's totally advisory role and just doing whatever we could to enable us to encourage or whatever word you wanna say, that certain things are put in place to achieve certain goals. I don't know how else to say it. I mean, like, a very, a very easy example there is, I think we get consensus at the table here that it would be nice to pull that whole path out and make it pervious. If they still necessitate a path to the water, yeah, it would be nice to utilize these L I P techniques and try to minimize that wash from the driveway or stop it from ever reaching.
All right, let's pick a date to go out there and check it out. And I think all we have to officially do is just notify the public in, you know, some newspaper or record that the planning board is gonna be outside of our regular two meetings a month, such and such a date, such and such a time. And we need like seven, ten-day lead time, something like that.
And you're supposed to take minutes and everything, which we never do, but...
Well, they're gonna take minutes.
You find a date that I'm available?
So today's the, what, fourth? Fourth?
Yeah.
Fifth?
Seventh.
Is this October?
I hope so.
Ten-four.
Ten-four.
Would a Saturday morning be good for people?
No.
Versus another, well, what's a good day then?
Sunday.
Oh, I can make the Sunday.
Really?
Unless I'm at my mother's. I don't know, I mean, looking at this day, we're all working on, half of us are working on Saturdays, you know?
Well, a Sunday morning, is a Sunday morning better than an afternoon?
You expect the architects out there on a Sunday, or?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
I think he'll be up there by himself, so.
We're thinking, you think it's...
We're gonna notify the homeowner.
Yeah.
Mondays and Tuesdays work pretty good.
So we just narrowed it down to weekends?
Late afternoon. Well, we don't have a whole lot of late afternoon, it starts getting... Starting.
Yeah, it's crying in the back, yeah.
Could somebody do it around afternoon, like five-thirty or something?
Five, five-thirty.
Five.
Depends on the days.
Uh, what days are bad?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Those are bad for Tuesdays.
Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday, how are Monday and Tuesday, Monday or Tuesdays? Five o'clock, say? All right, today's the, what are the count, there should be a calendar in here.
That was last year.
Today's still the time, really? They're not perpetual? Shoot! The bank doesn't get money, boys, so...
Can you, tell me what you have the dates?
Give me some dates, ten days from now.
Ten days, fifteenth, fifteenth is a Monday, sixteenth is a Tuesday.
What else is happening? Is anything else happening later on tomorrow?
What day you talk first about?
Monday the fifteenth? Now, today's, uh, if we get it in tomorrow, the smart shop...
I might be kinda quiet, though. Cause we need really more time than that.
Tuesday. I did, we...
Twenty-second, twenty-third, so next week.
Well, that's...
Kind of snowing.
Yeah, yeah, this could be that big snowstorm.
Are we gonna have enough time for public notice if we do it on the fifteenth?
Uh, well, we can put there a little newspaper.
How about on the website as in?
About the smothers. Well, that's what I mean by real news, but even that costs money. What do they charge for a little huge little pitch thing, you know, thing?
Fifty, sixty, about that much.
Is that not much?
We just got it, but it's in there.
So what seven days is that for the fifteenth, twenty-second?
James is gonna miss your next meeting, Joe.
I didn't look at the start of this year, this winter, this...
Thought so, I talked with them all spring, a little bit, beginning of the summer, and I haven't talked with them for a while.
Can you get that with me?
Yeah.
Well, um, what paper can we get in by the fifteenth that gives us seven days ahead of that? Oh, hey, oh, no, that wouldn't work. Screw it, let's just put it in the snooze for, you know, whatever it costs, fifty, sixty bucks or whatever. And just write up the same way that she's done the other ones.
For the fifteenth?
Yeah, for the fifteenth, at five or five-thirty.
Are we gonna meet here or meet at the?
When? Sunset, I mean, sunset's already before.
Six-thirty, six-twenty, yeah.
Well, this, if we meet it, it could take an hour, hour and a half to finish. Ten minutes.
Meet at the foot of Twelfth Street?
Yeah, by the mailboxes.
Cause we don't know where, is Kenny, can you help us that way?
Uh, sofa, but it's all the way down Twelfth Street, take a right, that's Aspen, it's the last place.
The last house on the left?
Uh, right.
Oh. Movie reference, you don't get it, all right?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Did you say five or five-thirty?
Five. That's what we're working on. Can you make five peoples?
That's okay.
Well, she do a little.
Come with the hat.
Anybody, anybody that can, we'll just write there at the mailboxes at five and, you know, just go down to the end of the road, take a right, so...
Where are the mailboxes?
Right at the, right on the fence on the east end of the fairgrounds, that's Twelfth Street.
Where the Hamburg truck was, I know.
Yeah.
Oh.
Across from Happy Trails and all the places.
Say thirty-three, I don't remember these names.
All right, so five o'clock, the fifteenth. And if we can also notify the homeowner, architect, whoever would like to be there.
So that's what we're on next meeting.
Yeah.
You don't get a reminder, huh?
Do we get to vote if we listen?
Pardon me? You do whatever you want. It's a free country, baby. All right, finish, last meeting. Take a break, read the minutes. I'll have to turn the motion.
Could somebody vote in my place because I wasn't there?
Your what, who?
Could somebody vote in my place because I wasn't there?
Uh, they could, if they wanted to. Who voted for Artie? Was it five or was it...
I voted for you.
Oh, that's right, you were both voting. You voted again.
Are you, someone voted for Artie.
I already lost the votes.
Did we get the firm?
Yeah, I'll be in there, take a right on Aspen, it's the last house.
It's just one page, it won't address that.
Pretty quick.
I saw it adjourned.
Another quick meeting.
So I'll take a motion when you're ready.
Make a motion in a second.
Second. Any changes or corrections? Questions? All some good, aye? Pause post-nay? Super, thanks, guys, first slide. Good, cable land.